Who's right for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Monday, December 5th, 2022 Board of Aldermen meeting. We'll start with a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
So.
The motion, can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to outside the rail. Tonight, we will start off with Lyle Jefferson from, and Crispin White from Cedar. Lyle. Crispin.
Thank you very much. We've been accused of overplanning as I came in. Mr. Heck said, wow, that's way down the road, but we wanted to talk a little bit about the next Whoopee Pie Festival, primarily just to get permission to move forward. And then we'll do all the permitting and start reaching out to vendors. But Crispin, who is our membership and events person, and he wanted to tell you a little bit about, one, how it went, and then, two, what we'd like to do next time. So.
Good evening, everyone. As most of you know, we had our first annual Whoopee Pie Festival on August 27th in conjunction with our Parade of Heroes that helped celebrate the essential workers that continued to work during the pandemic. So, very successful event. We learned a lot, and what we want to do now is start planning for next year. We already have a date in place, September 16th. We will not be having a parade at that event, so it'll be all about Whoopee Pies. Dream Maker Bakers helped make the largest Whoopee Pie in New England, 542 pounds. We are looking for 600-plus pounds for next year. So, just about. Met with them last week, they're all excited. So, we're going to be coming to you at the beginning of the year with permits to just shut down Center Street. Last year with the parade, we shut down Whale Street, Center Street, and Merchant's Row. So, just going to be looking for Center Street. It'll be a shorter event, but it's going to be still exciting and a great event to bring people out and celebrate Whoopee Pies. So, like that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So unless you say stop, we'll now go forward and we'll do all the planning for that, and we will come back asking for permission with the permit and all the regulations that follow that.
Any questions? All right.
Would also just like to take a brief 90 seconds to reintroduce for some of you and maybe introduce some of you to Scott Graves, who is the new program director for Startup Rutland, which is the business incubator that is being built into the Hub Co-Works. Scott is coming to us from Massachusetts, and he's moving his family up here soon. We've been very fortunate around housing, we think. We're working on that. But I just wanted you to hear briefly from Scott about his current plans and what he's going to do next. So would you like to say hi to everyone?
How on earth do you follow up a 600-pound Whoopee Pie? I'll try. I'll just say briefly what a pleasure and an honor it is to have the opportunity to come to the city of Rutland and to the state of Vermont to embark on this endeavor to build a really what I hope will be a great community of technology and of new business here for Rutland. And it also involves moving my wonderful wife and my two daughters here, something we've wanted to do for a very long period of time, so I want to thank everybody for letting us become the latest new citizens of Vermont and of Rutland City. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
And when we come back from Regional Marketing Money, we'll tell you we got another family, so we can chalk that one up. We had to hire this one, but you know, we got another family, so.
It does count.
It's a statistic. We want to remind you, and I know you know this, but it is because of the city's great support that we're able to move this project forward. The $400,000 coming from the ARPA fund is going to go a long ways, so thank you for making that happen for us. When we put the grant in, the EDA saw a city really behind a project, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Lyle. Okay, we are still in outside the rail. Is there anyone else in the community that'd like to speak from outside the rail for items that are not on the agenda? I'll, if you want to come up first, and then I'll get you after that.
Well, here we are again. Two weeks ago, I came before the board and asked you to put an item on the March Warning, a proposed charter change that would eliminate, that would prevent the addition of fluoride to the water supply. I feel like I was representing not just myself and the visible supporters, but probably several thousand Rutlanders who oppose fluoridation. And this is based on the three-to-two split back in 2016 when we had a vote. So what happened two weeks ago was nothing. No one spoke. It was simply stated that a vote to put an item on the March Warning requires a supermajority of seven votes. I was unfamiliar with that rule, so I went and checked, consulted with the city attorney. Turns out, the actual rule is two-thirds of those voting and present. Now, there were eight aldermen present that night, including the non-voting chairman, so two-thirds of seven would be five. So my request was derailed based on an incorrect interpretation of the charter. The other thing that bothered me a little about that evening was that everything seemed to have been worked out ahead of time. There was no discussion. Nobody was, you know, had a chance to state their position. We have an open-meeting law in Vermont, and I'm just going to read a couple quotes from the Secretary of State's explainer about the law. "In general, the open-meeting law requires public bodies to, second bullet point, discuss all business and take all actions in open meeting unless an exception in statute applies." And that's evidently a reference to executive sessions for contracts and other things. There's also a section on Daisy Chain Communications, which is where one board member talks to another, and then talks to another and another, and maybe a consensus arises without there actually being a meeting. And the explainer on the webpage says this. "We generally recommend that board members avoid engaging in successive, interrelated, private conversations about the board's business that, taken together, involve a quorum. These types of communications can be risky, especially if used to develop consensus. Their use outside a duly-worn meeting may obscure the board's decision-making process and thus interfere with the public's ability to participate and to hold government officials accountable." And, you know, that's what I feel happened, that the board members were not held accountable. If you go back to a year ago November, when I requested on behalf of Rutlanders that we take a fresh look at fluoridation, and it took a year to do that, which was, which was okay. We had the dentists and the public health people speak in favor, and a number of us opponents speak against, but the person who was not part of that was the Public Works Commissioner, James Rotundo, who ultimately, and really at the last moment, it was determined that he is the, he is the one with the authority to fluoridate the water supply. So, the whole reexamination of fluoridation seems to have been a waste of time, and it's hard to escape the conclusion that the Board of Aldermen is, is not wanting to be held accountable for this controversial public health measure called fluoridation. So, I'm again requesting what I requested two weeks ago, which is that the board put on the March ballot the proposed charter change, which, which we have drafted with the advice of the city attorney, proposed charter change that would eliminate fluoride from the water supply. Thank you.
Is there any discussion, questions or comments for Jack?
So, should we take a vote?
I'd like to make a motion that we take a vote here tonight on whether or not this should go to the city charter.
Okay. Did you want to, you should probably phrase the motion.
Yep. I would like to make a motion that this proposal in the form that you had edited would be put on the ballot in March.
I think we need to suspend the rules.
And before that, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and now the original motion that I would like to make, which is to put this language on the March ballot.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you, Thomas.
I think one of the board members referenced, and you brought this up in your comment around this previously having been on a ballot. Could someone shed light on that a little more, just with the history, or?
If I may, I believe Mr. Crowther spoke of it. It was on the ballot in 2016.
16, okay.
And it was defeated. The fluoridation was upheld by the vote.
Right. And can I just ask, you mentioned new research that had been surfaced since that time. Do you believe the public has swayed in their perspective on it since 2016?
Since 2016, there's been some important research on the effect of overexposure to fetuses and young children who are being bottle-fed with fluoridated water, showing decreased IQ at and above certain levels of exposure. So that's, that's very important research that's happened since 2016. Also, you know, I've been campaigning really with advertisements and letters to the editor and copies of studies to board members ever since that time, and as well as, you know, individual conversations with Rutlanders. And so I do feel that the perception of this issue has changed, and probably in our favor.
May I?
Alderman Davis, Alderman Talbot.
A question to the city attorney. Would this be a binding or non-binding question?
The way that it's been drafted, it would be binding. It would be, the charter itself would be, would be changed, and it would go to the legislature just like the other changes that we've been discussing.
Okay, Alderman Talbot, then Alderman Wick. You're good? Okay, Alderman Wick.
So, I'll just say it right now. I'm going to vote no on putting this to the public. The reason being, what I think has actually changed in the last few years is the public's trust in public health experts, and that's very dangerous. I don't view this as being much different, quite honestly. I can appreciate one man's passion and the effort that he puts in, but overwhelmingly, the consensus still is that this is one of the greatest public health achievements of the last century. I, I don't want to put this to a vote. I feel like that would be us giving away our duty to act on behalf of those who have elected us to represent them.
Alderman Davis.
Also, I am also going to vote no, basically because I have sat here for many years, since 2016 and this current year, and listened to health professionals who appreciate the information that's given from the opponents of fluoride, but certainly have a strong foundation of the benefits of, on the health side of the use of fluoride. And, and so I will be voting no because I believe that, that's a stronger argument in my mind.
Any other comments, questions? Alderman DePoy.
So, Mr. President, I have always been a proponent of taking the fluoride out of the water. And it's not necessarily because of the health impacts, although I have heard what Mr. Crowther has said, what Ms. Krevetsky has said over the years, and many others, both sides. My dentists, I've had at length discussions with them, and they're very much in favor of the fluoride being in the water. I just think that the application and the use of city funds on it from a fiscal perspective is the problem. But as I've told Mr. Crowther, and I've told this body in the past, we don't have a say in it. Can we defund it? Yes. But right now, it is currently funded for the next year, a year and a half until fiscal '25. So, I believe this to be an effort and futility at this point. I don't want to waste any more of this board's time on the issue until the next time that the funding matter comes up, and then I will be fully on board again, as I have been since 2007. But I am not going to vote to put this to the ballot at this point.
Okay, any more comments, questions? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. So, I do want to clear something up real quick, Jack. Alderman, the process and, and what's kind of happened in the last meeting, right? The process we went through is we did send this to committee, we did discuss it in committee, and we did bring it back to the full board, and the full board took no action, neither did the committee, right? So we did go through the proper process there. And then Alderman DePoy, at the last meeting, he could have told you, "The sky is orange, and I moved to table." Doesn't matter what he said prior to that. I mean, obviously, we hope he's not going to make a mistake or whatnot, but in this case, what he said is he moved to, he moved to table, the motion, and when he moved to table and there was no second, the motion died. That's all that was. I just want to be super clear that there was, there wasn't a point of, maybe there was a point of confusion, but if he had moved to table and said, "The sky is orange, I moved to table," that motion supersedes any other motion at that point. There's a few others that supersede it, and that's why the motion died at that point. I just want to be super clear that that, the process was followed. Does that make sense? Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. All right. We're still in outside the rail. Loopy.
Hello, everybody. I am still Loopy Leroux, and pretty disheartened by that, what just happened. And yeah, I'm a new resident. I've been here for four years. I do consider this to be my new forever home. I'm not a dog or a cat, but I plan on staying here in this community, and I do value all of you. I would like to ask, by a show of hands from the aldermen and women, who here drinks Rutland municipal water without filtration? Without filtration?
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Duly noted. I see who has not raised their hands. And can I see the same, can I ask the same of, of the community? Who here drinks the water unfiltered? Okay, it's about, I would say, half and half.
So, Loopy, just moving forward, just make sure you're addressing me.
Oh, okay. Yes.
If that's okay, thanks.
I will address you, but I'm also addressing my community, so.
That's fair.
Forgive me for not following protocol.
Appreciate it.
So, I think we could argue until we're blue in the face about the health benefits and deterrence of this drug. But the question in my mind is really more about the fact that it is a drug and it is not a supplement, as stated by the Federal Drug Administration. It is not a supplement. It is a medicine. It is a drug by the FDA itself. So the question is not, is it good for us? Is it bad for us? The question is, who is medicating our water? And do they have a license to practice medicine in the state of Vermont? It is not federally mandated for fluoridation to be, fluoride to be added to our municipal water supply. It is not state mandated. It is merely recommended by the Health Department. There is one man who you've got, you guys have said is the, where the buck stops per se, and that is Mr. James Rotondo. Now, does he have a license to practice medicine in the state of Vermont? I don't think he does. Why is this man prescribing a medication to all of us without our consent?
So, Loopy, you got 30 seconds.
I'm not done.
30 seconds, please.
Okay, thank you. I think that is the crux of the issue, is, are we being, are we, is he doing something that is illegal, actually? And I think we should think deeply about that. And I would like to also know, I mean, I don't, I was going to ask each of you to tell, tell us who, who supports it, who, who doesn't support it, and I think I know now, but I would ask again for your accountability and to show which of you supports continuing to fluoridate, fluoridate our water. Can you show us by a show of hands?
Loopy, if you want to.
I would like to see, and I think it's my right.
I understand what you would like, and if it is your right, you can email each of them directly, call them directly, but.
This is a publicly-held meeting, and we are allowed to ask our public officials questions that are difficult sometimes, and I do respect.
I understand that.
The order here, and I'm asking, you know, they can decline, but I would like to see who, who here supports it, so we know who to vote for.
Loopy, I, this is not the, no, you cannot. I'm sorry.
I can't.
This is not the, no, you cannot. This is not the.
I can't ask them.
For your question.
They're the elected officials.
But we aren't going to address it. The issue is dead. Jack has presented to it. It's the third time. I give you 30 seconds. Your time is up.
Okay, and I would also like to add that it's not one man. It is thousands of people who are behind him, including myself and a lot of other people.
I'm not questioning that at all. I'm not even questioning those.
Somebody here, I don't remember who it is who said it was one man. It is.
Loopy, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Okay, we are still in outside the rail. Representative Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to come here tonight as the newly-elected representative from District Four to say thank you to those people in District Four for the support, and also going forward, if there's anything that I can do for the administration, for this board in my new position, please feel free to contact me. Very much.
Can you just state your name and where you live for the record? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Representative-elect Eric McGuire, Rutland City, Five, and I just want to express the same sentiments as my colleague, Representative-elect Clifford. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to serve this community and anything I can do to support this exceptional community. Excuse me, please let me know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tonight, we'll be passing something to you, so you'll be getting it after the vote.
Okay. Are there any other issues that the public would like to discuss outside the rail that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Thank you very much. And good evening, everyone. Before you tonight, on your agenda, you are being, going to be asked to remove from the table three mayoral appointments. I'd like to ask if you would remove from the table the first appointment for the Board of Aldermen, and that would be Larry Cooper. And if I could ask if you could remove that from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion to remove from the table has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move to circulate the ballot box.
Second. Motion to circulate the ballot box has been seconded. Would the board please circulate the ballot box?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. While the clerk is doing that, do you have an update, or do you want to keep going on the?
Well, I do have one other thing I was going to touch base with you folks on. And pleased to be able to report to you that, as you recall, we had a debate a few weeks ago about the Maple Street project, and there was a grant application that was put forth through the city. And tonight, I am announcing that we were successful in that grant application, and it has been fully funded at $650,000. And so that project will move forward in its entirety, and I couldn't be more pleased about that. Appreciate all the hard work that Barbara Spalding has put into the, to that application and all the work that all the rest of the city and, and your support of that application, also members of the Board of Aldermen. So I think that was a, it's a great move for the city of Rutland. That was really the other thing I had.
Awesome. Do we want to move on? We'll count these first so we can.
Yeah.
Attorney Blumer will be tabulating those.
Fantastic.
Mr. President, for the sake of time, we should probably move on the others.
I think that's probably a good idea. We have the ballot box back. If you want to take the next one, that's fantastic.
Okay, so we also have two nominations for appointments to the RRA. First up, Hillary Ward. So if you could remove that from the table.
We have a motion to remove from the table has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a motion to circulate the ballot box.
Oh, I'll move to circulate the ballot box.
Do you want Larry to come on? Motion to circ.
I just didn't know if we wanted to wait for Larry's.
Actually, that's a great idea, Alderman Davis, because ladies and gentlemen, please congratulate your next alderman, Larry Cooperly. Larry, come on over here and make your statement from.
Take your seat.
And we'll take your vote, too. Okay.
I understood what you said. Sorry.
And Larry, we do want you to vote on this appointment after you're sworn in, so that we can make it official.
Sure, right. Want to make sure we get you on TV there, Larry. Yeah, right. So if you could raise your hand, they're here after me. I, Larry Cooperly, do solemnly swear.
I, Larry Cooperly.
That I will faithfully execute.
Faithfully execute?
The office for Aldermen.
The office of Aldermen.
For the city of Rutland.
The city of Rutland.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And abilities.
And abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Careful in back.
Should we allow him to vote?
Just because, yeah. All right, and then.
Should allow him to vote.
Mr. Mayor, we got one more appointment, I believe.
We do have one more appointment, and once again, this is for Commissioner in the RRA, and that is Mr. Chris Torrey. If you could remove his name from the.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to on-table has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move, circulate the ballot box.
Second. Your motion to circulate the ballot box has been seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Mr. Clerk, please circulate the ballot box. And then we will move on and wait for those results. So, we are, Mr. Mayor, anything else? You good?
All set.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, so we're in additions and deletions to the agenda. We do have two deletions. We're going to remove both the reports from Charter and Ordinance, the 1117 local option tax and the 1211 local option tax for this meeting, and we'll place them back on the next meeting, just to dot some t's, dot some i's and cross some t's for the city attorney. So we'll remove those two. Is there anything else to be added or deleted from the agenda? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, can I get, oh, sorry. Can I get a motion to remove those from the agenda?
Second.
Your motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They are removed. All right, moving on. Barbara Spalding, come on up. Request for referral for the Rutland Station area improvements, pages one through nine in your packet. Robert, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned in my memo, that the matching funds for the Rutland Station area improvement grants were not solidified, and now that we have signed a contract with the municipal planning or municipal project manager and are going out for bid for design construction, we need to have those formalized, and D.R., Downtown Rutland Partnership has asked to also be warned of that meeting.
Alderman Talbot.
So I'll make a motion to refer the issue of matching funds for the Rutland Station area improvements to community and economic development.
Second.
We have a motion to refer to CED, and it has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
All right, so I have the results. So for RRA Commissioner Ward, 10 yeses and zero nos. Welcome Commissioner Ward. And for Commissioner Torrey, 11 yeses and zero nos. So we have two board members for the RRA. Alderman Wickham.
President Dungus, I couldn't help but notice that Hillary was here and eager to say some words.
Fantastic. Thank you for putting that. I would like to come up and talk, now that Matt called you out.
I didn't want to put you on the spot.
No, not at all. I just wanna say thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate everybody's support in it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Very willingness to serve. We appreciate it.
She's definitely gonna have her hands full. They're definitely gonna have their hands full.
All right. Thank you very much, and welcome to all of the new people. All right, moving on. Treasurer Markowski, recommendation for lease financing of the purchase of two new police vehicles. Treasurer Markowski, come on up.
Hi, everyone. I apologize that I sent the material late, but what you have before you is a proposal to lease two police vehicles. We, we are on a regular leasing program with police vehicles, so this is two vehicles. The total amount, 106,106,278.70. This is the first time we'll be leasing the vehicles and purchasing the, the vehicle and having it fully equipped. We usually just purchase the vehicle and then bring it back here and then go through a lot to get it ready. So this way, when the vehicles are ready and we start, they're ready to go, so. So this has, the, the purchase of the vehicles went through Board of Finance, so, so what I'm asking of the board is, I presented three different leasing options, three different, all three-year term, just looking for the lowest rate, lowest payment for the city. So I made a recommendation to follow the three-year term with a rate of 5.71% with annual payments of $37,570. And the proposal was from municipal leasing consultants, so I would ask the board to consider that.
So I'll move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll just say the reason we suspend the rules, because it has not been to committee. So if I may, I'll move to approve the lease financing proposal from the municipal financing consultants for the purchase of two fully-equipped 2022 Ford interceptor vehicles, is that correct?
Yep.
For an amount of $106,278.70, with a term of three years at a rate of 5.71%, and authorize the mayor to sign the leasing documents subject to review by the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and it's been seconded, I'm not gonna repeat all that, it's been seconded. Is there any comments or questions or discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, Treasurer Markowski, I think you have an ARPA update and recommendation for resolution on ARPA spending and government salary and benefits related expenses, and we should have this in our email, right?
Yes, you should have it, and I hope everyone has it and has had a chance to read it. The ARPA rules are complicated. They started out as one thing, and then they threw in a final rule there last January and kind of changed everything on how it works. So that is why I'm here tonight, because my request from the board is the final rule allows us as a city to say, all of those ARPA dollars, we're gonna spend those on general government services. So that, what that does, in fact, is it all of a sudden creates this unrestricted fund balance. So that is what, as we're meeting, as we've been meeting on ARPA, we're considering those funds, ARPA funds spent, and we are making allocations to that unrestricted fund balance. So we need to officially state that we have, we stated already, we were gonna take the standard allowance. Now we're actually going to say, these are the expenses that we're gonna use for those ARPA dollars. So that is the first part of my request tonight, is for the board to adopt a resolution on the allocation of the ARPA funds.
Alderman Talbot.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to adopt the resolution for the allocation of ARPA funding to fund government services under the replacing lost sector revenue spending category to include general fund salaries, overtime, and benefits in the total amount of $4,506,011.8.
Second.
You have a motion for an allocation has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And then there was a second part of this, because we, we now, we have a significant unrestricted fund balance, so I would now ask the board to assign those funds in the general fund, so that they're available for those ARPA projects. I'm still gonna call it ARPA, I'm sorry, but I need to track it, so, so that we, now we're gonna assign it in the general fund, and it's available for those projects that we, it's an accounting, but it's a necessary way to account for these funds. So I'm going to ask the board to make a motion to assign those funds, and then, as I report out every month or even quarterly, you'll be able to see in the general fund how much has been spent of that. We're gonna start with that 4.5, then we'll draw it down as funds are spent, and so we really need to keep a close eye on this. And I think I've already met with Lyle at the hub, trying to come up with some guidance for how he's gonna request for those dollars, so that we can document. Should someone come in the next three years and say, what, what information do you have? We're gonna have it all together, so I'll meet with, I met with the Children's Museum already, I'll meet with Paramount, just to get some clarification on what documentation we should have for the city, so. So I would ask for that motion to assign those funds.
Alderman Talbot.
So I'll make another motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to assign the general fund unrestricted fund balance of $4,506,011.8 to be used to fund the ARPA special projects and expenses that are approved by the board.
Second.
We have a motion has been seconded. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there anything else?
Nothing else.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Thank you.
Don't we have a resolution here? There's a resolution in here.
Oh, that was the first item, was the resolution, and.
So that's the only signature.
That was the only signature. We tried to keep it on one page.
Do we need a motion to circulate?
Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Davis, I don't think that we've made a motion to authorize the chair to sign this resolution, so normally we would read the resolution aloud and then go for, just to make sure the i's are dotted on that, I think that the chair should just go ahead and read that, and the board can make a motion to authorize the sign.
All right.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right, you're good. So the resolution for American Rescue Plan Act ARPA allocation, whereas on March 11th, 2021, the President of the United States signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA to provide continued relief from public health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency, and whereas ARPA created the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, SLFRF, that provided direct funding to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to support their response and recovery from COVID-19 public health and emergency, and whereas the city of Rutland has accepted and received an allocation of the SLRF, SLFRF in the amount of $4,506,011.8 payable in two tranches, and whereas the SLFRF provides needed fiscal relief for recipients that have experienced revenue loss due to the onset of COVID-19 public health emergency, and whereas the Treasury presumes that up to $10 million in revenue has been lost due to the public health emergency, and recipients are permitted to use that amount not to exceed the award amount to fund government services, and whereas recipients may elect a standard allowance of $10 million to spend, to spend on government services through the period of performance, and whereas all recipients may elect to use the standard allowance instead of calculating lost revenue using the formula provided by the U.S. Department of the Treasury, including those with total allocations of $10 million or less. Whereas on April 18th, 2022, the city of Rutland Board of Alderman voted to make the one-time irrevocable decision to elect the standard allowance in the amount of $4,506,011.8 under the replacing lost public sector revenue loss category to fund government services, whereas the city of Rutland has the need to fund government services while in the recovery phase of the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, it be resolved, the Board of Alderman of the city of Rutland, Vermont, authorize the following, one, section one, the following ARPA funding to fund government services under replacing the lost public sector revenue spending category as follows. Expenses incurred in FY '23, government salaries and overtime, $3,500,000, government health insurance benefits, $1,611, for a total of $4,506,011, passed and adopted by the Board of Alderman, City of Rutland, Vermont, on this day, Monday, December 5th, 2022, signed by myself.
Suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion for the chair to sign the resolution has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Treasurer Markowski.
Thank you. Thanks for reading that. I'm glad I didn't have to.
Great. Thank you, Henry. Okay. Moving on to reports of standing committees, we've removed Alderman Savage's reports. So Alderman Talbot, Community and Economic Development.
All right, the Community and Economic Development Committee met on November 30th, 2022. Committee members present included Alderman Talbot, Alderman Franco via phone, Alderman Davis, and Alderman Wickham. Others present included President Dungus, Alderman Gillum, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Mayor Alair, zoning administrator Strinesty, Treasurer Markowski, Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, Heather Starzinski and Melanie Paskovich from Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. The meeting was called to order at 5:34 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to review the proposal for the city's market rate rental revitalization revolving loan pilot program drafted in collaboration with Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. Alderman Talbot began by explaining that in March 2022, the Board of Alderman committed $400,000 from the fund formerly known as ARPA for the purpose of creating a rental repair assistance program for use by landlords to renovate vacant multifamily housing units into market rate housing. Heather proceeded to go through the draft proposal, which recommends that the fund grant an additional, an initial 10 loans of up to $30,000 at a 1.5% interest rate, with an additional three loans made every three to four years as the fund replenishes. She emphasized that property owners who receive these funds will be expected to use above builder-grade materials and bring rental units online to like new standards. Alderman Davis asked how the program would ensure that a property owner receiving a $30,000 loan would make a $30,000 investment in the rental unit. Heather explained that there will be site visits, a review of scope of work, submission of receipts and invoices, and milestones the loan recipient has to achieve. Heather continued explaining that the focus will be on two to four unit properties, and that units must be vacant or turning over. The program will strive to ensure that tenants will not be displaced. All applicants will initially be reviewed to ensure they are in good standing with the city. BIPOC applicants, women applicants, and owner-occupied applicants will be prioritized. There will be a maximum loan of $90,000 per borrower, two units, and a shell. The loan terms will be 10 years. The underwriting criteria are based on existing criteria from other Neighbor Works programs. Loan applications will initially be submitted to Neighbor Works for evaluation. Recommended projects will then be sent to the Rutland Redevelopment Authority Board for selection, and then on to the Board of Alderman for final approval. The committee members and others present voiced strong support for the program proposal. Neighbor Works will make final revisions to the proposal and complete the supporting documents and return to this committee for final review and approval. The goal is to launch the program in early 2023. No motion was needed at this time, and the meeting adjourned at 6:41 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Talbot. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on, under reports of standing committees, to Alderman Gillum, Public Works.
Thank you very much. It's fresh off, hot off the press. This is hot off the press, because no one's got this yet. Public Works Committee had met on, tonight, at 6:15. Committee members present with Barbara Gallo, Wickham, DePoy, and Gillum. Others present was President Dungus, Mayor Alair, Alderman Davis, and Talbot, Public Works Commissioner Rotondo, and City Treasurer Markowski, and City Attorney Blumer. The issue at hand was the mayor's proposed Water Damage Fund, which is now called the No-Fault Damage Reimbursement Policy. The chairman opened up the meeting at 6:15, 6:16. The motion went into executive session to discuss the issue with the attorney, because it put the city at risk, and I'm not gonna talk about all the motions that we did, but we did all the legal motions to move us into executive session. The sheets have just been handed out, that would just came out of committee. And through lots of discussions, and this is the amended one, I would take it, okay. So Alderman DePoy moved as proposed the approval of the No-Fault Damage Reimbursement Policy, opposed by the city attorney as amended, and the vote was four, zero, and I so moved.
Second.
And the city attorney is probably gonna talk about this a little bit more, because now we have the new language in front of you right now.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any comments or questions? City Attorney, would you like to?
Any debate?
I mean, I can, I can go through for those that haven't had an opportunity to really read through. It's up to you. You usually like me to be less verbose.
Yes. I would agree.
I leave it to you. So just.
So I think we're good, unless there's any questions, because everybody should have seen this or have a copy.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, I can briefly tell you what changed, I mean, we talked about it in the committee, but I can tell you what, what changed, at least, because that language is brand new. Some, some people haven't seen it.
Can you give us a real, two-minute high level?
I can.
Should we, should we talk about what we're talking about here? First, a little discussion on.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
Public knows what you're talking about.
Sure. So the No-Fault Water Damage Reimbursement Policy is intended to set aside funds in the general fund that would be available to certain city homeowners who sustain damage through no fault of the city or otherwise, or their own, and potentially have that, those funds be available upon the board's review of the particular situation.[1674.88]
So there's a pretty in-depth set of eligibility requirements that the board has reviewed. And I just wanted to quickly highlight the changes that I made in the last 15 minutes since the meeting. In number two, there was a comment that the reference to fiscal year, you know, a layperson may not understand that our fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. So that's been added in number two. In number five, it just talks about the process so that the, the request should initially be filed with the city clerk, and then the city clerk would immediately forward to the city attorney for review. City attorney would promptly review to request, the request for conformance with the requirements of the policy and either notify the city clerk that the request can go to, go forward to the board or return to the requister with an explanation of why the request does not conform. And number six was another comment that came up in committee about the timing of requests. So this is intended that a request or, or an intent to request must be filed with the city clerk by July 15th for the prior fiscal year in order to be considered. So I chose the July 15th date because it should be hopefully before or around the same times as the, as the tax rate setting meeting would be, which is generally when you decide what you're going to do with assigned funds. And the intent to request is because we've asked these folks to, to jump through a few hoops. So if they sustained damage on June 30th, it would take longer than, I think, the 15 days to actually go through these other steps. So just basically getting on the radar of the board that there may be, that the, that the fund should be kind of held in an assigned status for some period of time rather than release at that tax rate setting meeting is, is the rationale for including that language.
Mayor Alair.
So I just wanted to add, I appreciate the input from the city attorney, from the city treasurer, getting us to the point of being able to support this. I think in the very rare instances that this is going to happen, this is going to be a big help to, to homeowners who have no other recourse and I appreciate the support. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Alderman Gillum?
Just want to make sure everybody knows at home and in the room, this will not exceed $15,000 per single event.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Meeting adjourned at 6:48 and I will forward my report to the city clerk's office with this amendment as amended through him tonight.
Great, thank you, Alderman Gillum. Appreciate it. We're moving on to reports of representatives, which we have none. And now we're into reports of select committees, which we have a parking committee report so you get to hear me talk for another five minutes. It's not a resolution.
Oh, parking?
Okay. Parking Committee Report for November 9th, 2022. The meeting started at 6:00 PM. Committee members in attendance were myself, vice chair Alderman Talbot, Chief Phil Cullen, Commissioner Rotundo. Others in attendance were Alderman Barbara Gallo, Officer Rosario, and for part of the meeting, Michael Logue from MSCC. There were four items on the agenda for this meeting. We began the meeting with discussion and presentation on replacement of meter heads. New parking meter heads. Michael Logue from the Municipal Supply Sales Company was in person and brought some meter heads from the Palm Parking Meters Company to the meeting to show the advances that have been made in parking meter head space over the past several years. Michael discussed the advantages and disadvantages of the different models of meter heads, what parts we could order to use our existing housings and collection cups, as well as what new heads and housings would be advantageous to Rutland, allowing us to upgrade our coin meter system. The committee discussed challenges with the current meter heads to ensure that if we replace them, we do not see the same challenges. Discussion of poles, locations, types of heads, and collection methods was had. Michael presented purchasing options and what we would need to do to procure replacement components when the time comes. This topic will remain in committee for further discussion. Michael departed the meeting at 6:47 and we continued on to the parking and ticket rate discussion. The committee's discussion on this tip, topic addressed the concept that although we may need to raise the parking ticket rates, processing a parking ticket today touches many hands and is time consuming. The committee needs to look at the procedure in place today to see if we can find efficiencies and this topic will be discussed in a future meeting. Discussion was had around what other committees, sorry, that should say communities, I apologize, what other communities are charging for parking tickets and where Rutland is in that field of municipalities. One of the main ideas in raising the rates of the parking tickets themselves also needs to, a need to work towards a ticket forgiveness program. The important point was made to say that if you pay to park for the correct length of time, these increased fees will not affect you. With the convenience of the app, we should see actual tickets distributed go down. There are two types of rates. Expired meter rates, your meter time has run out or you didn't pay for the meter in the first place, and then an overtime limit, you parked too long in the spot. We discussed different ticket rates and how setting a higher rate will incentivize compliance in putting money in through the meter. Alderman Barbara Gallo discussed the importance of communicating the new parking ticket rates. Commissioner Rotundo mentioned that there would be likely an influx of contested tickets. Alderman Talbot mentioned how the future, in the future, he would like to see a ticket forgiveness program where if you receive a parking ticket, you can spend that amount in a local business and have that receipt submitted with the ticket, which in turn would incentivize those who did receive a ticket to shop at those local businesses. These options would be discussed at a future parking committee meeting as well. The committee landed on two rates, an expired meter ticket of $30 and an overtime limit of 45. It mentioned again that these rates would be for ticketing those vehicles that were not in compliance for the spot. The conversation then migrated to parking rates and fee schedules and updated round three review. In our third round of parking rate discussions, we focused on the correct max, what the correct max rate should be for Rutland city parking rates. The current rates were discussed as well as what the city should accept or pass along the fees for the Park Mobile app. Discussion on the rates reflected our two previous committee meetings where most of the discussion had already been had. This discussion focused more on ensuring the price was set not too high, but was reasonable to be a revenue generator for the city, keeping up with price changes that have happened over the past decade. The discussion then moved to charging for the parking on Saturdays. The discussion showed interest on both sides of letting it remain free and the potential of charging on Saturdays. No decision was made on this topic and will likely be discussed in a future committee meeting. It was discussed that the Park Mobile credit card fees should be passed to the users of the app and there was consensus on the committee. Alderman Talbot then moved to set the max parking rate to $1.50 an hour, pass the Park Mobile fees to the user, and set the meter expired ticket price to $30 and time and spot ticket price to 45. And the motion passed unanimously and before I so move, Mr. City Attorney has presented us with our legal proper options for this.
Yeah, I think, I think you'll want to replace this with some separate motions. One thing that I just became aware of is the park, this part about the Park Mobile fees. So we have the Park Mobile contract later in the meeting. We did transfer, there's a, I forget now how much it is, but it's a fixed rate, you know, 30 cents, say, that is transferred to the, to the user. However, there's a 3% fee of the entire transaction that cannot be passed to the user, so that has to be absorbed by, by the city, so.
That was discussed in the meeting and that was, we were okay with that. That is, this motion reflects that. But not as in much detail as your justice.
Sure. Yeah, so there's different mechanisms here to accomplish some of these things and there's probably, it could be a little additional detail. So you may want to amend the motion or, I don't know if you would vote to strike the motion and replace it with three others or?
That's fine. So I'll also move. Somebody want a second?
Second.
To remove the motion?
I can't actually, so does somebody want to move the motion? Thank you, Bill.
I'll move to strike the motion or remove the motion.
So well, we'll move, we'll move the motion and we'll vote it down first, so.
I can't hear. Sorry, I can't hear what's going on.
We will move, can you move, do you want to move the motion? And then I'll get a second and then we'll vote no.
I'll move the motion.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
If I may, I'm, I'm a little lost, I'm sorry. Which motion are you now having, Michael?
The motion from our council.
You so moved it.
I can't, I can't though.
Okay.
So Michael's moving the motion.
We're scratching that, okay.
Phil's the second. So the goal, in order to get the proper motions in, we're going to hopefully vote no on this. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails.
Do we want to, I don't know what the hell we're doing.
No, no, we're voting out. This is. Okay. And that? So listen, I apologize for the complication. So what's happening right now, let me just explain, what's happening now is the motion that came out of committee needed to fail, it has failed, and now we're going to get a couple of motions, so we'll need to suspend the rules and take the motions from the city attorney. Alderman Whitcomb.
I was possibly thinking of a point of order and wondering, maybe you know us, Attorney Blumer, if we could just do a strike all amendment.
Well, it's too late now.
Well, just, I guess just, maybe for future reference too, for, for committee chairs, it would be helpful to have them broken down individually because there could be someone who's in favor of the $1.50 but not in favor of the $30. So voting on them all together is kind of problematic and in this case, there's just different mechanisms. You're going to have to do a resolution for one, you have to amend an ordinance for another. So you could amend this and replace it with the three separate, you know, motions, but I think everyone's on the same page. I assume that if you just strike it or whatever you voted, voted it down, that you can now suspend the rules if you want to and we can do them, you know, sort of all three separately.
Okay.
Okay, so I do have, I do have some language that I can help you with here.
That'd be good.
All right, so on the topic of the $1.50.
Hold on one second. Can we keep the conversation in here? Is that okay? I'm sorry, it's very hard to hear in the, it's fine. Nope, no, you're good. I just want to, go ahead, Alderman.
Okay, so on the topic of the $1.50 per hour, I have provided you with a resolution, I think, at your desks. And I'll, I'll read it into the record. It's a resolution amending parking meter rates, whereas the revised ordinances of Rutland, section 4709, authorizes the Board of Aldermen to amend the parking meter rates they previously established and whereas revised ordinance of Rutland, section 4709, directs the board to file such amended parking meter rates in the clerk's office. Now therefore be it resolved by the board, number one, to set the parking meter rates, which includes the rates for any kiosks and parking apps, at $1.50 per hour for metered parking spots with a maximum time limit less than 10 hours. And number two, to direct the clerk to keep this resolution on file in the clerk's office. So just a note on the 10-hour reference, currently the 10-hour meters, I believe, are set at 25 cents per hour. And so I discussed with the committee chair today that in order, setting a max of $1.50 without any specific direction to either DPW or the police to change the meters wouldn't really accomplish anything. So you need to basically instruct that, that this be changed to $1.50 and his thought was that that was the feeling for basically the 15-minute parking and the two-hour parking and maybe three at the kiosk, I don't remember. But basically for everything other than the 10-hour meters, what you would be voting on is to immediately move those or as soon as the meters can be physically changed to move those to $1.50 per hour. I don't know if that reflects exactly what you want to do, but that's what's on the, on the floor at least, or potentially on the floor.
So.
We have a no motion on the floor.
That's right. So we need a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
We have a motion to suspend the rules.
It was in committee, why are we suspending the rules?
Because we killed the motion from committee and this is a new motion. It wasn't discussed in committee specifically.
The issue was in committee. I don't know why we suspended it.
From a technical standpoint, I'm going to take this path just to make sure that we're okay. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the resolution as submitted?
I have a question about the motion before.
Okay.
Wasn't the intention of the committee not to set $1.50 as the rate for all meters, but the maximum rate at certain meters? That doesn't seem clear to me from this language. What does that mean? So what would, if we vote on it tonight, what does DPW and the police do tomorrow? My understanding was that the DPW commissioner is going to do an inventory of the different meters in the different areas and then come back to us to set specific rates for specific meters. Okay. I think then you may be able to just request that he do that and then when he comes back, go through the, you know, use a list to create the rates at that point. I think setting the $1.50 rate tonight might just bookmark it, that that was the discussion that was had, but it wouldn't, it doesn't do anything, I guess. You know, a board could come along later, I guess, and move it to some other number. So I thought maybe that was what you were aiming for, for certain meters, and that's why I came up with this language. But I think if you would like the inventory done and then, you know, basically to, to set the rates for each, either zone or type of meter, that you would maybe request him to do that audit and then bring it back to the parking committee and then you would vote, vote the rates out at that point. But you could do something now, I guess, to bookmark so if someone forgot that you'd had the discussion that you wanted to cap it at $1.50, it's somewhere in the minutes. It's not that it wouldn't, it's not an illegal motion, it just doesn't accomplish anything in and of itself tonight if that were the, if that were the vote.
Alderman Davis.
So what are, we're going from what to $1.50? What is our hourly rate now in the city to park?
I don't know. I know from parking myself.
I think it's 25 to 50 cents, is it not?
25 cents to 15 minutes.
25 cents on the 10-hour meters.
Right, okay. So it's 25 cents on a 10-hour meter.
And then everything else is pretty much 50 cents.
And we're talking about going to $1.50 on a 10-hour meter.
Well, this.
Has a partnership, is the partnership been part of this discussion? Because over the years, anything we did with parking downtown involved the partnership to discuss, you know, the impact that, for their, their customers, the friendliness of downtown, et cetera, et cetera. I don't have any, I don't have an issue with adjusting, getting rid of the kiosks because most of the revenue we lose is because nobody puts any money in them because they don't know how to use them. And I don't have a problem with adjusting rates. I have a problem with these rates. They're way too high for the city of Rutland.
Alderman DePoy.
And I guess my only question would be, I think we have meters that are different rates anyways, don't we? So these, this affects what, which areas? Because like, I think Court Street's a different rate than the center of downtown, right?
So as written, this affects everything but the 10-hour meters, the way it's written?
10 hours, oh, I get it.
Our, our intent in the, to answer your question, if you don't mind, our intent in the committee meeting was to set a max rate so that we could set adjustable rates below that.
Okay, so can we get a definitive answer as to what we're at right now? I mean, I'm hearing 25 cents, 50 cents an hour. What are we at right now?
Well, I was just going to say, it sounds like some people are not in favor of this. It sounds like nobody's in favor of this, it's the way it's written, because the intent of the committee was something different than what I've written and then substantively, I sense that at least, there's a couple of them that would not vote for it as written. So I guess my suggestion would be maybe to, to work on what you want the next step to be, whether you vote on there being a maximum, which again, doesn't really do anything, you can always change it later, or you vote to request that the, that the commissioner do the audit so that you can see, and that, and you could ask him to do what you've just asked me, to what are the current rates. But that, that probably is the next step rather than, I mean, I would just recycle what I've given you because it doesn't capture what the committee wanted to do or what at least the two of you would like to do. So I don't think you need to get into the, to the debate about it tonight if the intention was something completely different.
Mayor Alair.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. I had a chance to attend, I think, a couple of the parking meter, parking rates meetings and we did discuss this. I know I voiced my concern a little bit about, you know, what the rates were going to be, but I also talked a lot about making sure that people had, you know, an awareness that these rates were going to be changing and that there was going to be an education piece. And, you know, since I've had some time to think about this until we finally, you know, this report's being made, I have some greater concerns about how much those rates are going up all at once and I think it could be detrimental on, we're trying to entice people to come downtown, you know, and, and take part in our small businesses and I'm not sure that this is probably the best way to do it. Do the rates and the fines need to be looked at and adjusted? Probably. I think it's been quite a while since we've done that. Where it is right now, where these numbers are coming in right now, I don't think that they're appropriate. So what I'd like to ask is that you table the whole action until we can get some better information from Department of Public Works, maybe have another committee meeting on it and then people will certainly have some idea of what's coming because the Rutland Herald is here and there will be an article in the paper and I think that then you get some feedback from how people feel.
Alderwoman Davis.
If I may, I, I appreciate all the efforts that's gone into this. I don't have a problem with Park Mobile, that type of thing, it's more the, the setting of the fees or costs. But I guess I, as, would like to know, because it's been a while since I think the whole board has looked at the parking rates throughout the city, what is long-term, what is short-term, and what the rates are if they're, if they're different from meter to meter. But I also want to hear from the partnership. I want to, I want to hear that they're supportive of the increase of these rates. And maybe they are. I know you're a representative, but I still would like to hear from the partnership itself.
I've presented everything that's gone on at the parking committee to the Downtown Partnership's monthly meeting, I think, three different times.
Yeah.
And they are supportive, both Tiffany and Brian, of increasing these rates.
To $45, they know the amount.
I've shared these amounts with them, I shared them in the meeting.
I still would like to hear that from.
The board members who are business owners were there. The board members who are business owners were there, they had some feedback, but there wasn't sort of a negative response to these, they recognized it. And the one-fifty rate, I'll say, is set because we want to drive parking into the parking garage.
Well, of course we do.
So the street rates need to be higher downtown than the parking garage, or there's no incentive for people to go park in the parking garage.
And I think that's something that have, so I think that's something I'd need in front of me to make an authorized vote as well, is what is the parking, what are the rates at the parking meter, excuse me, what are the rates at the garage versus the set at the parking meter? So we see that, apples to apples when we make this kind of decision, but I just have a hard time swallowing that the partnership is supporting a forty-five-dollar fine in downtown Rutland, but maybe so.
Alderman Savage, then Alderman Barbara Gallo. And we don't have a motion on the floor, so let's try to finish up discussion and then...
Can I just ask, did the, was the partnership supportive of the fees, then if someone is assessed a forty-five-dollar fee, they could go and spend it in a business and take the receipt?
We didn't discuss that.
That part wasn't discussed. I think that would be an incentive for the partnership to...
I think that's going to, I think there's just going to be a lot of concern, I think we need to look at the rates, I think we need to probably adjust the, well, not even probably, certainly adjust the rates, look at what's happening in the parking garage, so we do achieve that, that parking incentive to go into the parking garage.
Hello?
But I do have a concern that even saying, well, you can spend your fine in, you know, X store, I'm still going to be mad. It's, that's not going to make a difference to me.
Alderman Talbot.
Two things. First, there's a real easy way to avoid being mad, and it's pay for parking. And the second thing is, I'll be happy to refer this back to the parking committee, so that we can keep talking about it, but we've had like five meetings where we've talked about this, and I think the only two board members who've been there are myself and Alderman Barbara Gallo. I understand that we have a very busy calendar and a lot of things going on, but if people could attend these meetings, we've talked about all of these things in great detail for many hours at these committee meetings.
Chief?
So the parking meters are twenty-five cents for fifteen minutes, so it's a dollar an hour, most of the meters, the ten-hour meters are cheaper, but most of the meters, the kiosks, it's twenty-five cents for fifteen minutes, it's a dollar an hour. The website I looked up for last says it's a dollar an hour. Half hour, first half hour's free, it's a dollar for an hour, two dollars for two hours, and three dollars all day. So, so again, the proposal really, really goes from a dollar an hour to a dollar fifty an hour.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Barbara Gallo.
I agree with, that we need to raise the rates, without a doubt, and I echo what the mayor said, that we need to do a massive advertising campaign, no matter what we do as far as raising these rates go. Be it electronic signs on routes four and seven, so that people know, ads in the Herald, Peg TV, whatever means we can use to get that information out there, we need to do so the people of Rutland understand these rates before we put them into effect. And I do think, though, that a dollar fifty an hour for the meters up on Court Square is a mo, is a lot, a little bit. That's a ten-hour meter, you're talking fifteen dollars for ten hours, and a lot of people park there because they have court business. And that seems excessively high. Now granted, they could park downtown in the parking garage cheaper, but now they've got to walk up the hill, and a lot of people aren't willing to do that. And some of them are too old to do it anyway. So I just think, whatever we do, we've got to advertise it, and advertise it heavy.
Alderman Gillum.
Mine's a procedure question for the city attorney. We are changing an ordinance, or we're just changing the rate in the ordinance?
The ordinance does not lay out the parking fees, it just says that from time to time the board will set the rates and file it with the city clerk.
So we need to go through the advertisement, the thirty-day warning, and all that process?
You don't need to do any of that, it's just by resolution. So this, if you had passed what I put in front of you tomorrow, that would have been, I mean, again, there's, needs time to fix the meter heads and do whatever, but as soon as they could have done that, or programmed the kiosk, that would be the law of the land, just by the vote tonight, would have been, and again, the, the language here, I don't think it matters, but the language here was to change everything other than the ten-hour meters. Because I knew that those were twenty-five cents from parking out, you know, parking out here during the day, so I had asked the chair, was the intention to go from twenty-five cents an hour to a dollar fifty? And he said, no. So we put this in for basically the fifteen-minute meters, the two-hour meters, I don't know if the kiosks are three hours. But the answer to your question is, you don't need to do, you don't need to go through the ordinance amendment.
So it's not an ordinance process?
It's just you guys resolving at any, any meeting, giving this to Henry, and then that becomes the, that becomes the rate.
I have no time, okay.
Okay, but, so that was for the rate, there is an ordinance for the penalties and fines, though, so...
Yes.
We're doing the process he just named, for the ordinance change?
We haven't gotten to that yet, I don't know how that's...
Okay, because I just, I got confused, since I know there was a concern there around the forty-five dollars, so to separate.
I just, I don't have a problem with the rate, because I just came from UVM Medical Center, they cost me eight dollars to park in there for just two hours. So I mean, our rates are right low than anybody else that I know of, but I have no problem with the rate. I'm just having a problem with the process of getting there, and it's Christmas time, and I don't want this word to get out to the people that, well, we did this, and they're going to hit us at Christmas, that, no, 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 I don't want that. I was just wondering, if we're going to table it, rather wait a while and get it all right, and then push it out there. I do appreciate the work the parking committee has done, absolutely.
Anybody would like to make a motion, or?
So did we need a motion to send it back to committee? I thought that's what I had made, but...
Did you want to make that motion?
Yeah.
So we have a motion to send it back to committee?
To send the parking meter rates back to the parking committee.
I'll check it. Okay, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Parking rates go back. All right, now moving on to parking ticket rates.
And the parking ticket rates, you have a proposed charter, or, sorry, not a charter amendment, proposed ordinance amendment in front of you, that says at the top, an ordinance to amend, title's twenty-seven, chapter four, penalties and fines, section five-two-zero-one. And you'll see that the operative language is down here below, where you see the strike through is what is currently in the ordinance, and the underlined amounts would be the replacement amounts for these. Again, this was in discussion with the chair, what he believed the intent of the committee was, as far as the second offense, third offense, and offenses thereafter, because the, the motion just talks about thirty dollars and forty-five, but there are these other second offense and third offense items in the, in the ordinance.
Alderman Savage.
Is there a way to, on the kiosks, will these fines be spelled right out on the kiosk? So people will know the difference between a designated time zone and, and when they overpark?
That was, it was discussed that we need to advertise it, how was it discussed? Alderman Davis.
So why are the fines not progressive? Why would I pay the same amount for a first, second, and third offense?
So in the meeting, just to pull the data, because I was listening to it again, the officer Rosario talked about how, you know, we can, they stack, so they add on to each other, so increasing the fines doesn't actually, it's just the same fine multiple times. So instead of a fifteen plus a thirty-seven plus a fifty, it's thirty plus thirty plus thirty.
Just to clarify, so the third offense would be ninety?
No, the third offense would be two tickets for sixty, or, two tickets that equals sixty, and then thirty, that makes it ninety total.
Plus the third.
Yes.
So, if I may, so we don't use the boot anymore, right? We do? We don't? We do?
We do, not terribly often, but from circumstances, it doesn't itself, it's working good.
So if there's a, a big offender out there that owes a lot of tickets, we boot them?
Can I say something? I got you, once you get a neck chart, you can't get out.
I mean, you could do it from there.
I'm on that parking committee, and we're the ones that put the meters up there, Bob Tepper, myself, and the board. And to get the people, the merchants, not to park out in front, we tried to give coupons that would let them park. Christmas was free, but we had, on that parking committee, we got those meters, Bob Tepper, myself, going, we got a boot, and that boot was used. And on one person, who just happened to be a friend of mine, and I'm sorry it happened, but it did happen, we collected over fifteen hundred dollars from that one boot that we towed a car. And why that boot is not being used, I don't know. And if you go on a parking downtown, we always had parking free at Christmas. And I was on that committee for about twelve, fourteen years, and we had free parking Christmas, and it was an asset to the city, as much as it could be. And it was much better off then, and we need, we need commitment.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate on your appointment with Larry, that's a very, very good move in the right direction. Very good. Thank you.
So do we want to make a motion, or we want to move on?
Again, if I may, I, I, I just think they're a little too high. So I don't, I don't know what the debate has been, why we went from X to X, but I just think, I just think, you know, a forty-five-dollar ticket first time is just a little, a little high.
Alderman DePoy, oh, sorry, Alderman DePoy, I apologize, and then Alderman Talbot.
You're pretty good.
Just a flop.
So it doesn't really sound like the board has the stomach to go with the new rates here that are proposed. I'm, my thought process right now on this is this, if I want to go to somewhere on Center Street, I go up and down, and if there's not a space, I wait, I go around the corner to Wales, or I go around the corner to merchants, and I'm not going in the parking deck. And that's, I don't know if I have a brain cramp on that, or what, but I've parked in that parking deck in the twenty-five years that it's been up, probably three times. And one of the times was I was at an event at the Paramount, came out after eleven o'clock, and my vehicle was locked in there. So, and I don't think that's why I don't park in there, I'm trying to think, just as a Rutlander, as all of us are, that, you know, where do we park down there? It seems like the parking deck is the state office building, people who work downtown at, at whatever the store, the business, or the attorneys, you know, attorney's offices, or insurance offices that are down there. Those are more who I would think park there regularly. The common shopper, like myself, which I was on Center Street today, dropping something off for repair at one of the jewellers, I park right down on the street, and I drop my twenty-five cents into the kiosk, because I know how to use it, I know there are people out there that don't know how to use it, there was a lady that came up after me, she didn't have any idea how to use it. And I kind of said, well, just follow the directions, you drop a coin in, or insert your card, and it'll, it'll, and you know, put your, you know, your license plate tag number down, and that lets them know that you've paid to, you know, park here for fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, whatever. Okay. She didn't have a clue, even after I explained it to her. But she wasn't going to go into the parking deck either. She was, she was already parked on the street, and that's where she was going to stay parked, to do whatever business she had. So the, I, I get the philosophy, the, the attempt to try to drive people in the parking deck, we've been doing it for twenty-five years, how do we get people to park in the parking deck? It's just not in the culture of the people who shop downtown to go in the parking deck. And we can attempt by raising all the rates, and attempt by raising the penalties and the fines for the tickets, it's, to me, just not going to happen that way. And how it does is still a mystery to me, and we can try this if the votes are here, but I just don't see that we have the stomach to raise the rates to this extent. Thanks.
Okay, Alderman Talbot, and then...
So I do have the stomach to raise the rates, I voted for it in committee, so did you, so did Chief Kilkell, so did Commissioner Rotundo, we all voted on this in committee, and there was support there. Alderman DePoy's has been trying to drive people into the parking garage for years, and it hasn't worked, but we haven't tried making meter parking more expensive as a way to drive people into the parking garage. So I think it's important that we try that, and we looked at other municipalities in the committee, both, you know, in Vermont and outside Vermont, and our parking rates are low, and our ticket rates are low. Officer Rosario had anecdotes about people from New Jersey and New York who think it's hilarious that our parking tickets are fifteen dollars, and they ask to take a selfie with him and the parking ticket, because that's how much parking costs, where they're visiting from. So there's a lot of revenue that we're not capturing. The data tells us that parking should be the second biggest source of revenue behind tax for a municipality, and it's not for us, we lose money on the parking fund each year. So we do need to make, you know, big changes in order to, to address that.
Okay. All right, so Joe, and then, Joe, sorry, Larry, sorry.
A little follow-up on that. What, do we know what fines are not being paid now in the amount?
Do you know?
I think...
You see most of the contestants.
I mean, I see the appeals, but the treasurer would have a, if, I mean, she may not know off the top of her head, but she would maybe know better what, what's out there, I don't know.
We have a lot of tickets that have been, but I can't give you a number tonight, I haven't been involved in the changes.
So, so I go back to changing the amount, is that going to increase the number of fines that will not be paid?
Just a... Alderman Barbara Gallo.
It probably will, you're probably going to find less people trying to pay, but, and I don't know how we would do this, we'd have to work with the state on this, there are some communities that if you don't pay your parking tickets, you can't register your vehicle. So if you've got a thousand dollars in outstanding parking tickets, you've got to pay that first, before they will allow you to register your vehicle. Now, if we could work something out with the state on something like that, there's one solution. The other thing is, the kiosks are going away. We voted, I believe, to purchase three hundred meters, which are going to be installed downtown, we didn't?
We didn't vote for that yet.
I thought we did.
No, we've discussed it, but we haven't...
We discussed it, okay. We're looking at replacing the kiosks with three hundred meters, which is going to eliminate this problem of, I don't know how to operate the kiosk. Now, the meters, you're going to be able to use mobile app, you're going to be able to use a credit card, or you're going to be able to use coin. People ought to be able to figure out one of, one of the three, and put money in the meter. And if they have signs there on the meters that say what the parking fine is, then they have no excuse if they get a ticket, and then we would have to use the boot on them when they eventually run up enough tickets and collect that revenue.
Alderman Wickham.
A question, it might be for Treasurer Markowski, or maybe even the chief. Why do we have such a big outstanding balance of unpaid tickets? Is it just not, no feasible mechanism to collect upon it? What kind of happens there?
They're, they're difficult to collect, if someone comes into the community, gets a ticket, and leaves, you know, I'm likely going to pay that parking ticket. We, we do have a lot, I'm not sure that this fixes the old parking tickets that aren't being paid, we have a process of quarterly reviewing, billing people, I think they double, I don't even know the schedule. I don't know if this fixes the old parking tickets that haven't been paid, I can answer that.
Just a quick follow-up, off the top of your head, I know you don't have it in front of you, i- is most of the uncollected balance, people who are passing through from a significant distance, or is it mostly...
No, I, I couldn't tell you, I'm sorry about that.
Sure.
My guess is that if, if there were a lot of local outstanding tickets, you have more boot-eligible candidates, the handheld, maybe it uses, indicates whether or not, I forget the words that are used, but essentially whether or not the car's boot-eligible. And when he gets that, he talks to Don, in the treasurer's office, and determines whether or not, you know, it's going to be booted, and he's been doing this, I think about a year and a half, and he's, he's had probably between six and ten boots, so it's not huge, and the boots are, I believe, after three tickets, or two hundred dollars. So there aren't really that many that are boot-eligible, if they don't get to that threshold.
There's no motion on the floor, is there any further comments or moves to make a motion?
So I didn't make the motion initially, because this was a lot to take in, and different than I expected, but I'll make a, a motion to support this resolution for new penalties and fines for parking.
Motion to support the ordinance change for new penalties and fines. A motion to support the ordinance change for new penalties and fines for parking tickets?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further comments, questions, or discussion?
Mary.
Can I ask a question? When is the effective date of this proposal?
That's a good point.
That's pretty important to the office that's collecting the ticket. I think we probably have some material that needs to be updated, and quite a bit of work, because it's really our office. When someone gets a $45 ticket, they're gonna be at the counter. So we need some leave time here for this change, please.
So would you want to see it amended to be 90 days from now, or longer?
I don't know. I don't know. Did you have in mind that tomorrow we would start charging?
No.
Okay, I got that set. So whatever's agreeable to this group, but I'd like to have an effective date, a list of, these are the old fines, these are the new fines. I'd like to be able to educate people.
One thing that we did talk about in the committee was having a public education campaign before the rates went into effect.
Great, because we're not ready.
Mr. City Attorney.
One other note, I probably could have mentioned it earlier, because this is the first time that the charter proposals, or I'm sorry, that ordinance proposal's being put in front of the board, and has to be unanimous tonight to pass, so.
Putting that out there. May I ask, and Matt, would this not have to be advertised for the 20 days before we take it back?
How about I withdraw my motion? Is that okay with you?
You're wasting time.
Okay. And I'll make a motion to send this back to the Parking Committee.
Okay.
Second.
A motion to send the ordinance change back to the Parking Committee for parking ticket rates has been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for the lively discussion. Okay, finish up the report here. The meeting that continued to our last subject was an update on Park Mobile, which we'll be discussing here in a minute. We discussed the remaining few items that were open-ended in the Park Mobile contract, and what needed to be completed and by whom. We discussed the next steps, and once the contract was signed, how setup would be required. The meeting adjourned at 7:25 E.M. Petitions and letters, miscellaneous communications, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have none. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have none. Unfinished business, Attorney Boomer, Park Mobile contract.
So I believe I sent this via email at some point last week. The agreement is ready to go as far as it's been, I think, endorsed by the Parking Committee, and they've made some changes that I've requested. So it's, it's ready for approval with the one caveat that in our ordinances for traffic, which I've got so many documents here floating around, it doesn't really currently, I guess for lack of better words, allow for the use of a parking app. It dictates that parking meters, for that matter, doesn't really allow for the use of the kiosks either, but it allows for coupon machines and for parking meters. And so if you wanted to kind of move this forward tonight, I would recommend doing so pending any necessary changes to the city ordinances that would allow for the app's use. I guess the other option would be to table it until, you know, we can put that, those ordinance amendments in front of you. Either, either one would work. It's basically, the contract wouldn't be signed until we're legally able to use the, the app. And I, again, not to add work to the Parking Committee, because it sounds like there's quite a bit there, there is a 20-some-odd-page portion of the ordinances that deal with vehicles, parking, and traffic, and some of this may be inconsistent with what you're looking to do, or just in general. So it would be worthwhile at some point for, I think, that committee to, to look through this portion of the ordinances and at least flag areas that they think are either, again, inconsistent with the, with the direction that you're moving in, so that we can kind of tee up maybe a, a more comprehensive change to these ordinances. Like I said, I don't think the kiosks now currently fit directly into the, into the laws that are on the books, and in the same way that the parking app should be mentioned or represented as we come into the 20, 21st century here. So as everything has been today, clear as mud, I can articulate the options again, or if that, any of that made sense, someone can take a stab at a motion or a non-motion, or...
Sounds like we should table it until we have the ordinance language. Probably it's safest to do that.
We have a motion to table. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Park Mobile contract has been tabled. Okay. No more unfinished business. Moving on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Tellman.
So the TIF working group has been working and meeting regularly and making lots of progress, and one of the things that came up out of the last meeting is that we wanted to go back to the Finance Committee and talk about where we're at in terms of the money that we had, and we're, what we think we need to get to the point where we can successfully get a TIF district and effectively utilize it. So I'd like to refer funding for the TIF application process to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion referred has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business?
To come before the board.
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?